Called over to the 1,457th meeting of the President and Board of Trustees for Machesney Park this 17th day of September 2018. Please rise for invitation given this evening by Pastor Heath Tibbins, First Baptist Church in Machesney Park, and please remain standing by the Pledge Allegiance led by Cub Scout Troop 206, led by Dave Logan, Scout Master. Thank you.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you for this community. We thank you even this week as we celebrate our Constitution. We're thankful for those who have placed themselves in service to our communities and pray blessings over them, especially for those that are serving their communities along the coast tonight. Father, just praying that you would just give them a spirit of unity and to be neighbors to one another, but also to meet real needs. And God would just pray that you would just watch over this meeting tonight, in Christ's name. Amen.
The scouts were coming forward.
Come on up.
Come on up. Come on forward, come on.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
By the way, I love those Nintendo socks. Up, up, down, down, left, right, left, right, A, B, select dirt. Thirty free guys on Contra.
We're pleased to have Boy Scout Troop 206 with us this evening. They're working on their citizenship in the community badge.
Thank you. Will the clerk please take roll?
Mayor Johnson.
Here.
Trustee Sykes is absent. Trustee Schmidt.
Here.
Kidd.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Bailey.
Here.
Beck.
Here.
Clerk is present. The attorney is present.
We have a quorum. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the September 4th board meeting.
So made.
The motion is second. Are there any additions or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes have been approved. Next, we have treasurer's report from Treasurer Bradley Robeson.
Thank you, Your Honor. The treasurer's report as of September 10, 2018, reflects the total of all funds to be $13,320,277.95. A copy of the report is available at the back of the room. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. We entertain a motion to accept the treasurer's report.
So made. Second.
Got a motion in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Treasurer's report has been approved. Next, we have communications from Clerk Laurie Mitchell.
Thank you, Your Honor. You can go ahead and go down to the podium if you'd like. This evening, we're pleased to have two proclamations. The first one will be read by Trustee Schmidt, who will read the proclamation for Constitution Week. And accepting the award tonight is Peggy Manjifor from the Daughters of the American Revolution.
Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government and a republic dedicated to rule by law. And whereas September 17, 2018, marks the 231st anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17 through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I, Steve Johnson, Mayor of the Village of Machesney Park, hereby proclaim September 17 through the 23rd as Constitution Week in Machesney Park and encourage all citizens to reflect on the privilege of being an American with all the rights and responsibilities which that privilege involves.
Thank you. Certainly my pleasure and honor to receive this proclamation from the board. The Daughters of the American Revolution and I'm representing the Rockford Chapter has two focus: education. We have several focus, but we certainly do education and patriotism in the same way. And I have a couple of little fun facts about the Constitution if you don't mind. Our United States Constitution is the oldest Constitution in any major government in the world. And it's also the shortest. It only has 1,400 words in it. Not all of the delegates at the Coninial Constitution signed the Constitution. This was a new one for me. And the three refused to sign because it didn't contain a Bill of Rights. The first 10 amendments of the United States Constitution became the Bill of Rights. It was ratified in 1791. And so they received their importance and not everyone has always just gone along with the rest of the crowd. We love that. All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
And also this evening, Mayor Johnson is presenting a proclamation for National POW MIA Recognition Day. And that proclamation will be read by Trustee Kidd and accepted by Barney Spencer.
Whereas nearly 16,000 former prisoner of war live in the United States having survived some of the most brutal treatment and conditions ever recorded in the history of mankind. And whereas we owe a tremendous amount of gratitude to our captured heroes who rely on great strength, physical, mental, and emotional, to endure the extreme hardship at the hands of their captors, but yet never yielding the sensitive information demanded of them which could have jeopardized the lives of the American soldiers still fighting in the battlefield. And whereas these brave prisoners endure horrific treatment at the hands of their captors, knowing if they would survive the day, let alone return home and see their loved ones again. And whereas there are still thousands of American soldiers, sailors, airmen, who remain unaccounted for. And whereas our thoughts and prayers are with the families of these still missing heroes as they pray for the return of the homes of the loved ones or finding their remains as long as they're missing, so as they may not be brought to their final and proper resting place at home. Now therefore, Steve Johnson, Mayor of the Village of Machesney Park, Illinois, hereby proclaim September 21, 2018, as National POW MIA Recognition Day throughout the Village of Machesney Park and encourage all citizens to honor the men and women who endured the great hardship while imprisoned by our nation's enemies and to keep their memories alive of those who are still missing.
I would like to introduce the people that are representing Vietnam and it's POW MIA. We've been doing it for 20-some years now. This is Dr. Mike Bellison. He's in charge of this year's thing. Dick Walmer, sir?
Watermullin.
Watermullin. Stand up. John Powell. Reverend Bob Terrell. And Bruce Jacobson over there, who's handling this thing for years, too. The POW MIA ceremony, the government has declared that the third Friday of September will be POW MIA Recognition Night. And we hold it at the Los Park Auditorium in their gymnasium. It's free to come in there. We have snacks. We're going to have a wonderful program. You're going to hear a lot about POWs, MIA's. We will not rest until every POW MIA is accounted for. There are still over 1,600 families from the Vietnam War who don't know the fate of their loved ones. We would like to make sure that every POW MIA gets recognized. And that's why we hold this ceremony, to make sure that people remember that there are these people out there. It's a candlelight ceremony. It's not a celebration of any kind. It is something that we like to put together as a remembrance so that people don't forget what's going on. These are part of the group. There's a lot more that have been involved in that thing to put this thing on. And if you've got time, Friday night at 7 o'clock at the Los Park City Hall, the auditorium or the gymnasium there, and we'll have refreshments and a wonderful program. So we invite everybody and tell your neighbors, tell your friends. Aaron, I know that we're going to be on with you, what, tomorrow? You know, so thank you all. And this proclamation means so much to us, you know, that the city of Machesney Park realizes what a thing that this is. So thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you all. Thank you for being here. If you'd like to stay till the end of the meeting, we'd like to get a picture with you and the Boy Scouts together. I think that would be very nice. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's all.
Okay. Thank you. Next, we have the warrant.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Administration Finance Committee met this evening, and we have warrants totaling I'll make a motion for their approval.
Second.
The motion is second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, will the clerk please take roll call?
Trustee Sykes is absent. Schmidt.
Aye.
Kidd.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Bailey.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Five ayes, no nays, and one absent.
Bills have been approved. Next on the agenda is administrative reports. This week, I attended a tour of the PCI Pharmaceutical Service Complex in Rockford. I was very impressed by their facility and it was a very informative tour showcasing their business. The way finding signs are being put up throughout the village by the Public Works Department, it will take some time to get all the signs installed. And I really appreciate all their hard work and effort of getting them done in a timely manner. Thank you, guys. I'm very happy to announce that Los Ponce's Restaurant is now open. They're located in front of the town center. I encourage everyone to go out and support the new restaurant in the village. The official grand opening will be next week, next Saturday, September 22. Later this week, I'll attend an annual Illinois Municipal League Conference in Chicago. This is a great opportunity to meet and network with other elected officials in the state to exchange ideas and attend classes that will provide valuable information for the village. Continuing on with the administrative reports, next would be Tom Green.
No report tonight, John.
Thank you. Next would be Village Administrator Tim Savage.
Thank you. Very briefly, the river did crest last week at well under 12 feet. We had, you know, some flooding in yards, very minimal use of our sandbag operations that were provided. So I think we fared fairly well. And we had some water on roadways, shore drive area. The Public Works crew is now cleaning up shore landing and some other cleanup along ditches. Otherwise, we fared very well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next would be Community Development Director James Richter.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just have one item. The Hobby Lobby at the Machesney Park Gateway District Center, next to Home Depot, is finishing up work on their new store, and they plan to open on Monday, October 1st. Thank you.
Thank you. Good news. Thank you. Next would be Superintendent Public Works Chad Hunter.
No report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next would be Village Engineer Chris Stopkins.
Thank you, Your Honor. A quick report on ongoing projects throughout the village, the scout, juniper, and cadet improvements. The contractor has substantially completed the storm sewer improvements, so we should no longer see flooding out there. The contractor is currently working on inner replacement, and they have corded out Juniper Lane between Cameo and Mildred. Later this week, they'll start shaping stone, and as of right now, our first curb and gutter pour is tentatively scheduled for Tuesday of next week. The victory lane improvements will be starting later this week. We're going to do an exploratory dig to determine the position of a water main, and then work will start in earnest come next week. So this week will just be the introduction. The exploratory dig is going to happen on Thursday, and then next Monday, we'll start actually putting the underground in. We haven't talked about the flood demolition project in quite some time, but as you know, we added two last remaining homes into the demolition, and those two homes will be demoed. Looks like later next week, the contractors got them penciled in for. Likewise, the APP demos, the notices have been turned into EPA. We did have our pre-construction meeting last week. 1011 Colonial is looking like it's going to be demoed on the 27th of September, and then the other homes will be done during the first and second week of October. And then finally, the Quantum Road improvements. Contractor's completed the rough grading despite some rather wet conditions up there. They're going to start with Santeri Sewer tomorrow, and I want to extend a thank you to the Rock River Water Reclamation District and especially Joe Von Arx. Last week, in order to get permits, we have to go through a clearinghouse of state agencies. We had, this area's been turned in for permits back in '97, 2008, 2013, 2014, and went through the clearinghouse just fine. And this time, we did not. We actually got a surprise from one of the state agencies that took us the better part of last week to work through. We did work through it, and the Santeri District really bent over backwards to help us out. We got our clearinghouse letter today at about 2:15, and by 4 o'clock, we had a permit in hand. So the district was extremely accommodating, and especially want to thank Joe for all their hard work. That's all I have this evening, tonight. That's all I have this evening, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Next would be Public Safety Supervisor Lieutenant Pete Delprado.
No report. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next would be Committee and Trustee Reports. Do we have any reports this evening from any trustees? Trustee Schmidt?
Your Honor, the Public Improvement and Safety Committee meeting was held tonight, and we approved one resolution with a positive recommendation for the October 1st board meeting.
Thank you. Any other reports? Hearing none, next would be Consent Agenda. Would the staff present all items to be considered on a consent agenda?
Tonight's consent agenda consists of Item A, Ordinance 3118, authorizing the issuance of a $900,000 promissory note for the construction of Quantum Court within the West Stone Tiff, and this is the final reading. Item B, Ordinance 3018, granting a variance to the accessory building height at 11203 Dorothea Avenue, first reading. Item C, Ordinance 3218, granting a special use permit for self-storage operation at 10446 Product Drive, first reading. Item D, Ordinance 3318, provides for a text amendment to the zoning code, Article 1, Section Z, 12, entitled Rear Yard Abutting Public Roadway, first reading. Item E, Ordinance 3418, provides for a text amendment to Article 1, Section Z, 9 of the zoning code, Fence Regulations, first reading. Item F, Ordinance 3518, provides for a text amendment to Chapter 23, Compensatory Storage Requirements, first reading. Finally, Item G, Resolution 50R18, authorizing a five-year lease agreement with TLC LLC at 8702 North 2nd Street, Unit B. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. I'd like to remove Item G, Resolution 50R18, and put separately under Unfinished Business. Are there any other items the trustees might want to remove from Consent Agenda? Trustee Wilson.
Your Honor, I'd like to take off Item B, Ordinance 30-18.
Thank you. Any other items? Okay. So Item G, Resolution 50R18, and Ordinance B, 3018, will be removed from the Consent Agenda and considered under Unfinished Business. Entertain a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
So made. Second.
Got a motion in second. Will the clerk please take roll call?
Trustee Kidd.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Bailey.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Sykes is absent.
Smith. Aye.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays, and one absent.
Consent Agenda has been approved. Next would be Unfinished Business. Entertain a motion to approve Ordinance 3018, variance for accessible building height, 11203 Dorothea Avenue, first reading.
So made. Second.
A motion in second. May I have staff report, please?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. As you recall, in 2016, the owner of the property applied to rezone it from AG Agricultural to R1 Single Family, as it was a non-conforming agricultural lot. The Village Board approved the rezoning, and a very nice single family was built in Subcoy that year. The applicant has approached the village with a request for variance to allow the construction of a 20-foot tall garage that exceeds the 15-foot maximum height allowed. The applicant is seeking the additional height to allow for the storage of recreational vehicles, including camper, boat, motorcycles. Staff recommended approval with the petitioner's request, as the applicant would meet four of six of the findings of fact, and because aesthetically, it's more acceptable to store recreational vehicles inside rather than outside. The Planning and Zoning Commission and Planning and Economic Development Committee both approved positive recommendations for this request. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Trustee Wilson?
At some point, I'm going to be waiving the rules to have a second reading on this this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you so much. Any further discussion? Hearing none, will the clerk please take roll call?
Trustee Wilson.
Aye.
Bailey.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Kidd.
Aye.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays, and one absent.
Ordinance 3018 has passed for first reading. Trustee Wilson.
Your Honor, I'd like to suspend the rules this evening to have that ordinance go on to a second reading this evening.
Second. Motion in second to suspend the rules. May I have roll call?
Trustee Bailey.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Kidd.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Five ayes, no nays, and one absent.
Okay, we have suspended the rules to bring it back for second reading. So entertain a motion for Ordinance 3018, variance for accessible building height, 11203 Dorothea Avenue, second reading.
So made.
Second.
A motion in second. We've had staff report. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, will the clerk please take roll call?
Trustee Beck.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Kidd.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Bailey.
Aye.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays, and one absent.
Ordinance 3018 has passed for second reading. Next, I'll entertain a motion to bring the Resolution 50R18, authorizing a five-year lease with TLC Illinois LLC for 8702 North 2nd Street, Unit B.
So made.
Got a motion in second. I will be voting present, since my wife Diana has just started working part-time for TLC. And she, I talked it over with the attorney, and he feels there's no conflict of interest because she's just an hourly employee. So that's how I'm going to vote on this. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, will the clerk please take roll call?
Do you want a staff report?
Oh, a staff report, I'm sorry.
It's okay, thank you. Resolution 50R18 authorizes a five-year lease with TLC Illinois for their corporate office at JCPenney, at the JCPenney Building. As you know, TLC is constructing the assisted living facility immediately south of the JCPenney Building, and as a part of that, have requested a need for future corporate office space for TLC Illinois. So we will be creating a 1,753-square-foot office space that will allow them to use the south entrance to the JCPenney Building to access their office. A demising wall will be installed, and just to kind of give TLC their own unit, of course, and they will be using the existing bathrooms in the building. This is a net-net lease, which means that TLC is going to pay for their own property taxes and utilities in addition to the rent, and we expect them to get started on their build-out soon, as soon as we receive their building plans. We request your favorable approval of that this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any discussions? Trustee Kidd?
I'll be voting yes for this grudgingly, because I don't think we should own JCPenney's. However, I also believe that we shouldn't lose money either, and I also feel there is a conflict of interest with your wife working there. But I do understand that you and your family are very good people. So thank you very much.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, will the clerk please take roll call?
Mayor Johnson.
Present.
Sykes is absent.
Smith. Aye.
Kidd.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Bailey.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Five ayes, no nays, one absent, and one present.
Thank you. So Resolution 50R18 has passed. Next would be New Business, and I'll entertain a motion for Resolution 55R18, authorizing the village to sell surplus property at 1017 Harlem Road.
So made.
Second.
Got a motion in second. May I have staff report, please?
Thank you. As the description references, this resolution authorizes the village to sell the real property at 1017 Harlem. The village acquired 1017 earlier this year after we found that it had been listed for some time, and the house was also on our demolition list at the time and continues to be on our demolition list. So we're presenting tonight the contract for sale of the property to North Park Fire District in the same amount that the village purchased it for, which is $25,000. There are several contingencies attached to the sale agreement for this property. First is that the village obtained a necessary appraisal, and that the property sell for no less than 80% of the appraised value that comes back. Second, that North Park Fire District will be obtaining zoning approval for this location and the property adjacent to it, zoning appropriate for the use as a fire facility. Third, and finally, the district will be asking for six months in which to close on the property so that they can seek zoning approval and also make arrangements monetarily to acquire the property. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Trustee Wilson?
I just want to, one more time, make it clear that there is no discussions of any fire training facility going in at this location as far as they've communicated towards you.
That's correct. Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, will the clerk please take roll call?
Trustee Smith.
Aye.
Kidd.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Bailey.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays, and one absent.
Resolution 55R18 has passed. Next would be Public Comment. Is there anyone that would like to address the board for the goods of the village? Please state your name and your address for the board. Please approach your podium. Thank you.
My name is Ken Horawak. I live at 228 Wosher Boulevard.
Thank you.
I have a complaint with Rock River Disposal. Did leave garbage cans in the street and in the front of our mailboxes. I'm paying for this garbage service. I think that it is not too much to expect that my garbage cans should be put back behind the curb where it belongs. You cannot talk to the drivers or the management. They are pure arrogance. Even the mailman has complained about Rock River disposal blocking the mailboxes. At the present time, Rock River Disposal has a monopoly. According to Webster's Dictionary, a monopoly is a commodity controlled by one party with concerted action by the village. concerted action by the village. Giving a monopoly to Rock River Disposal is probably illegal when it comes to our village. In conclusion, I want their contract terminated. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks. Anyone else would like to address the board? Trustee Kidd?
For the record, I would like to place in the record, last week alone, I received seven phone calls about the garbage company, four concerning the hydraulic fluid that's built and that went over three streets, and two or three about the garbage not being properly placed in the trash cans and not neatly placed to the curb. So some concerns from the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing none, next would be adjournment. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So made.
Second.
Got a motion in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned.